Good evening. Welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for November 8th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Bauma, would you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, I like that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauma. City Planner, can we do a roll call, please?
Good evening. Chair Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Present.
Commissioner Bauma.
Present.
Commissioner Hayes indicated she was sick tonight. Commissioner Custer.
Here.
And Commissioner Rains is on absence as we approved that in a recent meeting. So you have four commissioners, all in the chambers, and you do have a quorum tonight.
Great, thank you. I don't see anything on our Communications of Matters, not on tonight's agenda, nothing is itemized. City Planner, anything that we would have received?
Chairman, we have one speaker who'd like to speak on non-agenda items.
Okay, come forward.
Joan Bachmann.
Welcome, Joan. Again, this is an item not on tonight's agenda. Go ahead. Three minutes.
Okay. Joan Bachmann, in the Seaside neighborhood. I wanted to just talk a little bit about height and traffic. Usually, we do that when there's a project, but there's some general things that I think we should just continue to keep discussing and learning about. First off, in my opinion, downtown, well, the downtown district begins at Seagate and goes north. I don't care what height things are north of Seagate. South of Seagate, I care greatly. We have an urban downtown. Knock yourselves out. Right now, we have a wall going up Seagate that's seven stories tall, five stories, seven stories, 10 stories, I don't care. I care that it's a wall. South of Seagate, we have the nodes and avenues, and we need to follow them religiously. And so, that'll be coming up in the future with projects. Avenues are shorter, residential, or schools, or green space. Nodes are commercial, mixed use, because there isn't second floor commercial, really. The other thing I wanted to talk about was traffic. So, traffic's not very intuitive. For years, everybody said widen things and it'll be safer, and we all now know that widening streets are not safer. They actually have a lot more accidents. Also, widening streets does not necessarily make things go through quicker. The throughput does not necessarily happen quicker. You can see this on Oceanside Boulevard. Everybody zooms up in a group and they stop, and then they zoom up and they stop, and then they zoom up and they stop. And it's particularly a problem on Oceanside Boulevard because Caltrans and the city can't stay synced. I understand it's Caltrans' fault, from the city people. So you see this a lot, and when you're seeing traffic and you're saying, "Oh, that's a lot of traffic," look behind the group. There's usually space. And where we really see this is on Coast Highway, coming down through the Loma Alta Valley, along Loma Alta Creek. Some people call it the dip, or the, whatever they call it. It is Loma Alta Creek Valley. And every time I'm there, and I'm there multiple times a day, any time of day, Saturdays, rush hour, you name it, I'm there, with all kinds of other trucks and that. And there's always a slug of traffic behind Oceanside Boulevard light, behind the Sprinter, if it happened to cross, or if a bus went by, and at Moore Street. And you see these slugs. Behind the slugs, there's space. That tells you that it is not anything about the number of lanes, it's just purely that they're being stopped and bunched up. And occasionally, you will see very momentarily where it might be continuous, but that's very momentary. I guess I have one more minute. The last comment I want to make is west of Five, we need to get to a point where traffic moves continuously and slowly. And by that, what we need to do, eliminate left turns, eliminate stops. If we could do that through traffic calming measures, especially in our neighborhood, this is how we're going to be able to live with density, if we have traffic calming. So, traffic calming just directs the cars through. If you want to cut through the neighborhood, you can do it in a circuitous path, but the point is you keep moving, and all the cars keep moving. If all the cars keep moving, they will get through the city faster. And, right now, having Coast Highway go quickly, 38 miles an hour through South O is very common, because I look down and go, "Oh, I should slow down." That's where it is. And so, we need to make traffic go smoothly and continuously. With traffic calming in our neighborhoods, it's not about the number of lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Any other city planner, or is that, that's it?
That was our only speaker on non-agenda.
Thank you. So, we'll move to approval of minutes from our last meeting, October 25th. Any discussion from commissioners, or are we ready for a motion to approve?
I have no, I'm ready for a motion. I'll make it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Custer.
I'll second.
And a second. No further discussions, vote. Commissioner Custer?
Yes, I approve.
I approve the minutes. Vice Chair Morrissey.
Aye.
And Commissioner Bauma.
Yes.
Thank you. And it's approved. Consent calendar, nothing on tonight's agenda, and transportation items, nothing on tonight's agenda. So, we'll go to public hearings. We have two items tonight. The first is consideration of a local coastal program amendment, which will request California Coastal Commission certification of Oceanside zoning ordinance, Articles 4 and 30. This has to do with an emergency shelter applicant, and the, excuse me, emergency shelter, the applicant is the city of Oceanside. We'll start with disclosures. I read the staff report. I think that's it. Commissioner Custer?
I read the report.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Same.
And Commissioner Bauma.
Same.
Thank you. We have presentation tonight by Shannon Vitale. Welcome, Shannon.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Shannon Vitale, an associate planner in the Development Services Department. The first item I'm here to discuss tonight is regarding Agenda Item Number 4, a local coastal program amendment regarding emergency shelters. The Emergency Shelter Zone Amendment, ZA 213, was brought before the Planning Commission on June 7th of this year. The zone amendment revised the zoning ordinance to allow for emergency shelters by right on certain city-owned properties, and modified the development and operational requirements for emergency shelters to align with state guidelines. At that hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed zoning text amendments. On June 16th, the City Council voted to introduce an ordinance amending Articles 4, 11, 13, 16, and 30 of the zoning ordinance to reflect the proposed zoning text amendment, and the ordinance was adopted on August 4th. Although emergency shelters are not allowed in the coastal zone, two of the zoning articles that were revised as part of the zone amendment, Articles 4 and Article 30, are effective citywide, and any revisions to those articles require a local coastal program amendment and must be certified by the Coastal Commission. As a reminder, Article 4 was amended to revise the use classification for emergency shelter to allow for longer stays and more services. Article 30 was revised to incorporate new development standards and site regulations for emergency shelters pursuant to state guidelines. The resolution before you tonight is to incorporate the amended text of Articles 4 and 30, as approved by Zone Amendment ZA 213, into the implementing document of the local coastal program. There are no further changes proposed as part of this action. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend City Council approval of local coastal program amendment, LCPA 213, by adopting Resolution Number 2021-P32. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for staff? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Shannon. We'll go to the public. Any slips from speakers this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speaker slips, but you might ask if there's anyone who hasn't filled out a slip.
Thank you. No slips submitted to staff, but I see a number of folks in the audience, anybody who wanted to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing item. Bring it back to the commission. This seems like a pretty straightforward item, kind of a cleanup item, or furthering already what we've done before in the City Council as well, so unless there's any discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend, we take the staff's recommendation by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2021-P32, and Local LCP Amendment A213 with findings and approval attached herein.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Vice Chair Morrissey. A second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Custer. Any other discussion? Don't see any, so let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Custer?
Aye, yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauma?
Yes.
And I am also a yes.
For the record, we'll record that as four in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Thank you. It's probably the quickest item we've taken care of in quite some time. Thank you, Shannon, for that. We'll go to Item 5. Item 5 is development, an item requesting approval of development plan, conditional use permit, and a variance to allow the demolition of existing buildings and structures, and then to be followed by construction of a nearly 20,000-square-foot fire station located at 602 Civic Center Drive. The applicant on this is also the city of Oceanside. This would be Fire Station 1. Disclosures. I read the staff report. I think we had one email, and familiar with the location, it's right across the street from us here this evening. Commissioner Custer?
Read the report, read the email, and looked at the plans and the site.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey.
The same.
And Commissioner Bauma.
Also the same.
Great, thank you. Shannon, go ahead.
Good evening again. Shannon Vitale, Associate Planner with Development Services Department. The next item I'm here to discuss is Agenda Item Number 5, regarding the relocation of Fire Station 1. The project before you consists of a development plan, a conditional use permit, and a variance to construct an approximately 20,000-square-foot new fire station. The 30,000-square-foot site, which is outlined in orange on this slide, is located at 602 Civic Center Drive, directly across the street from City Hall. Situated within the Townsite Neighborhood Planning Area, the subject property has a land use designation of professional-commercial and a zoning designation of commercial-professional. The site is bounded by Freeman Street to the west, Sports Fisher Drive to the north, an alley to the east, and Civic Center Drive to the south. Surrounding land uses include single and multifamily residential, as well as professional office, including City Hall directly to the south. There are currently two buildings located on the project site that are currently used by the city's Code Enforcement Division. Due to the age of the buildings, a historic resource assessment was prepared. The historic assessment indicates the buildings have been significantly altered and are not considered architecturally or historically significant, and the removal would not result in a significant impact to historic resources. The existing Fire Station 1 building, which was constructed in 1929, is seismically insufficient and is no longer capable of providing the space needed to meet the current or projected needs of the fire department in respect to personnel and apparatus requirements. Plans for replacing the station were first presented to City Council in 2006. However, the project was put on hold due to lack of available funding. In 2019, City Council provided direction to staff to move forward with the project, and a contract was awarded in September 2019 for the design and construction of a new fire station to replace the existing one. In September of this year, the city received a grant from the Department of Defense to help fund the new station. The project consists of a development plan to approve the demolition of the existing buildings on site and construct a new two-story, 19,977-square-foot facility, including an emergency generator and a concrete pad for a future fuel tank on site. The facility is designed to accommodate 12 firefighting and paramedics personnel and will provide the necessary housing and training needed for onsite staff. A five-bay apparatus will house a fire engine, fire truck ladder, ambulance, and additional equipment as needed. A conditional use permit is required for the public safety facility, and a variance is requested to reduce the yard setbacks along Freeman Street and Sports Fisher Drive. As is shown here on the renderings, the project is designed to complement City Hall by incorporating the Irving Gill architectural style into the overall design while still functioning as a fire station with large apparatus space to accommodate the necessary equipment. A public art piece is planned for the south-facing wall along Civic Center Drive. The project team is working closely with the City Arts Commission to secure this component. The historic bell and fire hydrant that are currently located at Fire Station 1 will be relocated to the new location. Both the bell and hydrant will be situated in the front yard area adjacent to Civic Center Drive, and will have a public viewing area and informational plaque. The first floor of the facility consists of a public lobby, conference room, fitness area, training rooms, offices, and storage space, while the second story consists of living accommodations for onsite staff. The maximum height of the building is approximately 30 feet. There will be solar panels proposed on the rooftop, and the parapet wall to screen those will go up to 33 feet 10 inches. There is a community mural planned for the eastern-facing wall adjacent to the alley. Here's the proposed site and landscape plan. The main entrance for the public is off of Freeman Street. There's a dedicated ADA parking space, as well as street parking available along Freeman Street and Civic Center. Additionally, there's parking available in the Civic Center parking structure across the street. There are 11 parking spaces for onsite staff, with one of the spaces designated as an EV vehicle charging. The emergency generator and fuel tank will be located within a concrete enclosure towards the rear of the property adjacent to the alley. There are three vehicular access points, Sports Fisher Drive, Civic Center, and Freeman Street. The fire trucks will enter the property from Sports Fisher Drive to pull into the apparatus space and will exit on Civic Center Drive. The ambulances and other small vehicles will utilize the Freeman Street entrance. A minimum of 14 24-inch box trees will be planted on site, as well as additional landscaping, consisting of shrubs and other drought-resistant plants. To comply with the city's urban forestry requirements, the project is conditioned to plant additional street trees in the parkways along Freeman, Sports Fisher, and Civic Center Drive. All street trees will be chosen from the current-approved City of Oceanside Street Tree List and will be subject to approval of the city's landscape architect. As detailed in the staff report, staff has evaluated the project and finds it consistent with the general plan land use element and the energy and climate action element. The project is also compliant with the Climate Action Plan ordinances related to renewable energy, EV parking, and tree canopy. The project qualifies for a Class 32 infill exemption pursuant to CEQA, and the project complies with the zoning ordinance and development standards for the commercial-professional zone, which I'll describe on the next slide. So, as shown on this slide and described in more detail in the staff report, the project complies with all applicable development standards for the CP zoning district, with the exception of the side yard setbacks along Freeman and Sports Fisher Drive, for which a variance is requested. The setback along Freeman Street is proposed at 10 feet, with a trellis feature approximately seven feet from the property line. The project complies with a 20-foot setback from Sports Fisher to the exterior of the building, but the onsite parking and carport are located approximately seven feet from the property line. Staff supports the proposed deviations because the developable area of the site is constrained, since the lot is considered a double-frontage corner lot, thereby requiring an additional 10-foot setback on each street frontage. The reduced setbacks will allow for more onsite parking and an expanded building footprint to meet the needs of the fire department. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development and approve the project by adopting Resolution Number 2021-P33. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we also have our project team, project applicant, and fire department staff here for any questions.
Great. I'll ask the question, and if you want to direct it to somebody else, then that's fine. My question is the funding. So, I noticed the Defense Department funding $3.5 million. Wonder if you could talk about the overall cost and any other funding that goes to support, maybe the O&amp;M, or any gaps between the construction costs and that grant?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Rosales. I will defer to City Engineer Brian Thomas to answer that question.
Good evening, Honorable Chairperson. Brian Thomas, City Engineer. The DOD grant is in the amount of $3.5 million. Part of that requirement is NEPA clearance, so we have a National Environmental Protection Agency clearance to govern that. Our total estimated cost is right around $18 million. Originally, the entire cost was going to be funded through the Measure X program. With the $3.5 million Measure X, or I'm sorry, the $3.5 million DOD grant, we're able to circulate that $3.5 million from Measure X back into that program for additional safety and roadway and infrastructure improvements. So, we have all the money that we need through the various programs on the city at this point.
Okay. You mentioned NEPA, so that's required because it's, we get some federal funding, and we're also doing CEQA 2, or?
Both.
Both?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Both of them, yes. And we did get the categorical exclusion through NEPA, through Camp Pendleton, as of last week.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you both. We may have some others. This is a public hearing, so I see a number of folks in the audience. Before we go there, any slips to speak? City Planner?
Chair Rosales, we have seven requests to speak on this item.
Great, thank you. You want to call them up one at a time? Hello again, Joan.
Hello, Joan Bachmann. I do want to point out, I have my SpaceX shirt on. Son Number 3 works for SpaceX.
Very cool. Thank you.
He has a launch, he's launching NASA's DART program on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Leave it to NASA to pick that launch date. Okay, so, where is it? Oh, there it is. Okay. And a zoom? I don't know how to zoom it on here.
I think we're zooming it for you.
Okay, thank you. You can just fill the screen with that. So, first off, kudos to the city for replacing palms. They just came, we have 5,000 in the city, and data just came out that it's not helping climate change to have palms. They actually don't do anything for the air, and that's from a study. So, we have 5,000, so maybe we could replace 2,000 of them with real trees. That would be great. I do want to talk about the architecture. That is the number-one thing that I'm very concerned about on this project. It really doesn't matter how much you spend of the $18 million if you have an ugly building. It's going to be ugly. It's not going to function well. People are shaped by their buildings. There's a quote, "We shape our buildings, our buildings shape us." And I really think this is an awful design. So, more money needs to be put into design. It will pay off in other ways. So, a sense of place is really priceless. We have a tourism economy. People come here because it's Oceanside. How do they know they're in Oceanside and not Huntington Beach, or Solana Beach, or wherever they might be? They know because they recognize Oceanside. So, over the years, the city, starting with the actual Irving Gill and City Hall, and then this building, many of the buildings around, and now the ones that are being saved, like where the Blade is, the restaurant, are all in the same direction, and all our municipal buildings need to stay in that direction. This was an attempt to do that for the fire station, but I think they failed miserably. I'd like you to look at windows like the eyes. So, if you're looking at a beautiful model, and she's got a black eye, her pink eye, she's got some problem, it's probably not a pretty picture. And that's the way buildings are. You can have a gorgeous building with terrible windows, and it just says what the windows say. So, no matter how much money you put in, you put suburban sliders in, it looks like a track-home suburban slider. And there are ways to fix that, using casemount windows that have all the egress, but spacing them out. I've seen people spend money on casemount windows only to put them next to each other, and they look like sliders. So, architects know this stuff. So, they really need to get this reviewed by an architect. Or divided lights. So, what we have here is one of our best buildings is, it's something, the middle one. There's Pier Side, that's what it is, is really a pretty nice building, and it has a lot of planes on it, it has a lot of motion in it, the arches are right, and the inset, there is the actual metal that is on that building. The one next to it is in La Jolla. That is a classic Irving Gill building. It's square. You could say it has no architecture. It's square. The windows make that building really work, and it's revered in La Jolla. The other one down, right over the words Irving Gill, that's the Maple Don Luhon House in LA. Then we have the Blade Restaurant, and then where the city actually saved the Irving Gill element at the beach, those two bottom pictures, and then Caltrans actually came through with a railing on 76 that got the arches going. So, we have all these elements. This fire station has like a tutu around it. I don't know what to call that thing that sticks out, tutu, and suburban slider windows. So, the architecture is a failure. I have no issues with the use, the size, the lot coverage, anything like that. It's purely architecture, and the architecture needs to be redone in a way that is integral to the building, not just add-ons. If you compare the new hotels with the first one that was just north of the pier, you can see that things are just sticking up, they're just add-ons, and the other ones are integral. That makes a difference, and there's a big difference in quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Next speaker?
So, our next speaker is Bobby Velazquez, followed by, I'm sorry if I mispronounce this, but Alberto Gutierrez.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Bobby Velazquez, and I'm a North County resident. I'm asking for the Planning Commission to seize this moment and ensure that the citizens of Oceanside have the ability to work on this project first and foremost. The local workforce should build this fire station, number one. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Alberto Gutierrez. I'm a union carpenter, and I'm from Oceanside. Born and raised there, went to El Camilo. My family's from here. My name, at this time, I would like to have the opportunity to build onto this. I want to work here. I want to be able to come here. I have a newborn, and I'm tired of driving out of town to work constantly. There's only been a couple projects here that we do, and the rest of the projects are always in San Diego. But I got to drive all the way to, you know, by the Padres Stadium to work, or any other place, but I'm trying to get back over here and work, and that way I can be around my baby and stuff, and it would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next two speakers are Emily G., to be followed by George Vieramontes.
Good evening, Board. My name is Emily, and I'm an Oceanside resident. I want my husband to have more local job opportunities so he can spend more time with our family, instead of driving far away for work. We have a newborn, and our family needs him. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
How you doing? Good evening, Commissioners. How are you? My name's Jorge Vieramontes. I'm a North County resident and a skilled carpenter. I personally have seen victims of cash pay, payroll fraud, human trafficking, on federal prevailing wage projects in this great city of Oceanside. One of the projects I'm speaking about, if you're driving down Highway 78 right before college, I can throw a rock and hit this project that was built here. I have the opportunity, we always speak about the, how beautiful the buildings are and the projects, but it's where we speak about the people that build it, the men and women that build these projects. The same workers that are being exploited and trafficked in from other states and other countries, I have the opportunity to sit down and speak with them. The same men and women that are building that project that I'm speaking about, I sit down and ask them, "Hey, what's going on?" They're telling me how much they're suffering. They're telling me about the cash pay they get paid because we don't hold our contractors affordable, accountable, to pay the taxes on them. They're paying them cash. So, my ask today, Commissioners, are what measures are in place to stop human trafficking, tax evasion, payroll fraud? You're probably thinking, "Is this a union, non-union thing?" No. I speak to this workforce. It's about being human. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The final two speakers are Francisco Penya and Christopher The final two speakers are Francisco Peña and Christopher Allen.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Francisco Peña. I've been a North County resident for over 30 years. I have three sons, which all three of them played sports all over here in the North County. Unfortunately, you know, because of my traveling to work at UC Irvine and UC Riverside, I wasn't able to coach them the way I would have, I would have loved to and spend more time with them. Being a skilled carpenter, I feel blessed because I was able to achieve the American goal of buying my first house at the age of 22, working for contractors that actually pay a livable wage. Right now, two of my sons are around that age right now, and they are looking at me and saying, Dad, how could we achieve the goal that you achieved? We want to help our future to live here in the States. Now I have my oldest son, who's, by next year he'll be married, now he's thinking of moving to Arizona. Why? Because it's more affordable, and why? Because living here in the state of California is so expensive. We need contractors to, we need local contractors to build our local buildings. Hire local. We live here, we want to live, we live here, we want to build here. Build local, hire local. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, board. Base value, this looks pretty good, but at what cost? What it comes down to is the board, as you sit there, you got those seats because of your vision and empathy for the community, for community wealth. But as you heard from a couple comments before, there are criminal contractors out there, and many seen on projects just like this across San Diego and greater. The problem with that is you have first responders, men and women, that are the first line of defense for the community. You are the first line of defense for the working class on a city level. I urge your opposition for this project until there are provisions that help eliminate the cheating of workforce, that help local hire for both the workers and local hire for area contractors, responsible contractors, ones that pay taxes, those same taxes that fund these projects, the ones that fund the schools, the police department, the public works. Like I said, I urge your opposition for this project until those provisions are set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it for speakers?
Chair, there are no further speakers.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion. I took some notes, I had a couple items. One, maybe we start with, is the architectural comments. I know Commissioner Obama, you're an architect, so we are looking to you to help us walk through what you're seeing here and your own thoughts.
Okay, I was going to speak on something else first, but I'll get into the architecture first. I appreciate Joan, Joan's bringing this up. I think she hit on a few things. I mean, the fire station that's up on 76, the one that's by the mission, I think that one was done like with amazing detail, amazing architecture, beautiful fire station. I think you guys know the one I'm talking about. I'm not sure which number that one is, but it's exceptional. This one is not, you know, it's got, it's got the bare, it's got the bones of something that could be great, but like the details of Irving Gill have not been followed. Like even on, if you look at your towers and your parapets, all those little things, you look at this building and you see how the towers go up, and it actually comes in. This one shows that the tower going up and it goes out with a detail. So just a little detail like that, that doesn't cost any more money, that just is a detail that follows this building, would be appreciated. The idea of archways and the tile use, like the recessed windows, I didn't really see any recessed windows in this. It calls out that there is, but I can't see it on the plans. But again, this building again has, not every window's recessed with that tile detail, but some of them are. So the idea of maybe, maybe at the entrances, you maybe recessed some of the windows, maybe on the arches, you use a tile detail, but the idea of what you've done, we've done on this building should reflect in that building, because that's so important to have the two tied together, because it's, what you've got, the structure of it, the layout of it, the function of it, I have no questions about that. It's just basically the, how you, how you just articulate, how you decorate, how you, how you enrich it, how you spritz it up, you know what I mean? I don't know if I'm getting to any of you guys over there, you're sitting there like I'm an idiot.
You're getting to me.
But I'm just feeling like, I know this is, it's like easy. It's not going to cost that much more money. It's just details that you can follow from this building, take that and bring it over there. Look at all the rich little tiled accents we have here, how beautiful that is. And that would be really cool to carry that through onto that building. So Joan hit it like on some of the things that, yeah, you need to change some stuff up. I mean, changing out all the windows to casemot might be kind of expensive, but maybe you can just detail a little bit more like this one is detailed to kind of reflect some of that Irving Gill-ish kind of, because this is not, this is Irving Gill-ish, but not really Irving Gill. So I think you need to, I mean, I'm not sure, did you do this building, Mr. Thomas, or is this like an actual architect that did this?
Right here, it says STK.
Oh, it is an architect, okay.
It's Dr. [inaudible].
Yeah, because he just said he was in charge. So STK was your architect?
There we go, there we go. GV Salt from STK Architecture.
Oh, there you go, okay. Tell us a little bit about your design.
Good evening, Commissioners. This building, when we studied the Irving Gill style, there's a number of characteristics that we did bring out of this station that I will try and point out. If you look at this, your City Hall, it steps back as you move back from the ocean. We have some number of, three different ceiling heights here. The two-story of where the apparatus, living quarters are, they're above the three doors. We have a second height above the apparatus in the middle. And the third one on the right, we made a tower out of using the, that inside of that room is actually the standpipe, sprinkler system. So those are the three forms that we used the stair steps with. Also, we have two different sizes of doors there. The 14 by 14s are for your larger ladder trucks and larger apparatus. And the three on the left are for your ambulances, your smaller vehicles. So we actually complimented the windows by using the canopy, kind of an eyebrow form that works its way around the building to provide additional shade for the windows, which are all recessed two inches, similar to this building in the City Hall. So they'll have that similar look and detail to it. The sliding windows actually came as a request from the owner, because you have beautiful breezes here, and we wanted to be able to capture those and be able to capture that breeze inside, especially the second story where all their living quarters are, and even the downstairs. So I also tried to use a number, this picture doesn't show it, but on the, around the backside of the building, we do have a lot of, some horizontal windows, which was a big part of Irving Gill's style as well. Those windows tie into the kitchen, and on that backside, we also have a large open glazing that opens out to the decks. And the decks is where we use a lot of the arches. You're going to see, wherever you see arches on the second floor, those are the areas where we have decks for be able to be able to use and go out on that deck and be able to use that deck. But the arches were a part of it that I saw was used in the Irving Gill style here as well. We looked at trying to put arches in the large doors where the trucks goes, but we concluded that by doing that, you're creating an obstacle that sometimes the engines could run into. So that's why we didn't go to that direction. So many of the details may look typically, I don't want to say, we've got the stucco here that you have, we have a similar type of coping that goes all the way around the top. We have similar types of doors and windows that you have here. So I believe that we've captured the Irving Gill style.
Can we go back to that very first slide? Okay, the first thing I'm going to say, is see the number one, your tower? If you look at the tower here, look at the tower on this building, it's not the same. The tower here has a cap that kind of comes out. The ones here recess in. It's not a big detail change, it's just a change that basically would give it another semblance of similarity to this design. And I don't, and I totally agree with you on, none of the apparatus stores need to be arched. I think you have, you've added the flavor of the arches, you've already done a nice job with that. I'm just saying that like, some of the things, like the other elevation you showed, I think it's on Freeman, can you show me that one? Okay. Sorry, I can't point. Let me just point. Right here, this area, okay? Okay, that's a perfect area to maybe add some detail with some kind of a tile, like the color, like the colors they used on this building, like just a simple little addition of just something that might just flavor it up, give it something of a, of a compliment to this building. Like it's an easy, these are all easy things. This is not like we're saying we're changing out every window, like put more arches in. I never thought any of that. I'm just saying that taking the same design you have and adding a little spritz, if you want to call it spritz, if you want to call it flavor, like the tower detail is very important, I think, because that tower doesn't look anything like these towers. All you got to do is just look outside and see what I'm saying. I'm sure you saw that. You're an architect, you know what I'm talking about. So just maybe, I'm just suggesting, the city doesn't have to do any of this stuff. I'm just throwing it out to say that I think this building, as our one comment said, is very important to our city's character here in downtown. We want it to make this building, this building just as amazing as the City Hall building is. So if you could just take a little time to do just a little bit of flavor, I think it would really work. Your structure, what you've got, your layout, everything is fine. It's just a little bit of, I call it spritz, but a little bit, just a little bit more flavor to this building. Like that, that tower is a perfect example of where you could just change it. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I talk too much.
She gets worked up sometimes.
I'm very, I'm Italian, so I just have this thing.
I understand, I understand.
Could you address the tower?
The area that you're pointing to is above the front entrance. On the inside of that front entrance is where the TV or TV room basically is for the fire station. The TV rooms are basically fairly, are windowless rooms usually, to be able to get the best reception and have the best layout for the whole, that whole room. We also stair step up, so there's two levels inside that TV room. That is actually, the wall that's there in the front is actually, it's hard to see, but if you look at the floor plan, it does have a curve that comes out also away from the major front force. And your front door is actually recessed about four feet, right at that location. And we have horizontal, expanded storefront right there, which again is a element that Irving Gill used in a number of his, his other places, other buildings. The tower, the tower is an easy element to, to yes, to be added.
Freeman, your front door? It's hard for us to follow what you're saying. Freeman is the front door then, right?
Correct.
Okay, and it's recessed, perfect. Why don't you just add some tile?
Tile can be added quite easily. I didn't foresee that.
It can be added quite easily.
Tying the two together more, just trying to reflect what the richness of this City Hall has to that would be great. And I think that the fire station that was done down the road a piece is amazing with the amount of detail and money was spent there. So I'm sure that out of the 18 million, there's something we can be added here that can, you know.
So maybe if we make the motion, we could say, can we look at those two elements?
And before, yeah, before we go there, maybe we go to Brian and talk about where we are. I mean, maybe turn this into a question of where we are in terms of, this is conceptual, you're looking for approval, but is the design final before it goes out to bid for construction? So we have an opportunity to add some elements if we would like?
The design is pretty much final at this point, but we can make some minor adjustments at this point. We can add color to, to the front entrance, we can add some tile to match. Unfortunately, the tile we have now here at City Hall is getting harder and harder and harder and harder to find. Our facilities maintenance manager is at wits' end. In fact, the square tiles are no longer square, they're rectangular, so when he's trying to replace tile around the city, it's either you take out four to replace, you know, two pieces and change the flavor, but we can do our best to make that match. It's not too late at this point to make some minor adjustments to it, so we can deal with that.
And I think on the tile, we're thinking, making, or the suggestion is to make a link between the two buildings, not an absolute color scheme, color scheme comparison, but the link is close enough to where it's evident that the styles are very similar. I think that's kind of what.
Yes, and the tower is another important element of this building. Is there any way you can kind of mimic the tower of this building to the tower of that building? Just reflect on anything on the inside. It's not going to take away from anything that you have to do functionally, it's just decoration. You just look at the tower here, and if you could just, because that's a primary element on this building, is that tower, it's beautiful. So you want to make that just like this tower, which is beautiful. So I'm just, the tower and a little tile.
We can look at that, too.
Easy.
Brian, is this in Plan Check?
I'm sorry?
Is this in Plan Check?
It is.
Okay.
It is, and we can make the changes. Even if we don't get them in before we go out to bid, we can do a construction change later.
You can always do a change order, yeah. Okay, while you're here, Louise, can I jump in real quick?
Oh, yeah, please.
And I know you had another question. So this is a municipal project, and so, and then there's federal grant funding that comes along with this particular project. So walk us through the selection process for a contractor actually doing the construction here, because we have, we have our union contingents folks here tonight, and thank you for your presence. They raised issues that, you know, that reflect a desire to have jobs that support their labor and their kind of skill sets. So, because I know this is, this is a different project than a private development, it's municipal project, so is the city bound to find contractors that fit within that mold? Kind of walk us through that process, how this is different than your typical private development.
Absolutely, and I want to thank the Carpenters Union for coming and bringing these very important issues forward, and we believe you wholeheartedly and want to help you. Having said that, because this is partially funded through a DoD grant, we are required to have a Buy American clause in our specifications. We are short of having to do Davis Bacon requirements, which are federal requirement on everything, just because of the nature of the grant. However, under state law, any publicly bid project, even if there's only a single dollar added to that project, must be publicly bid under the state contract code under Section 1775, which means everything must be prevailing wage. Division of Industrial Relations sets those every August for both journeyman and apprenticeships. So part of our specifications has a Buy American clause. One of the other things that the city has been asked to do by city management, at least my staff's been asked to do by city management at this point, is to also include hire locals in order to keep the money as local as possible. For these large projects, we have gone to a prequalification basis process where we vet the contractors before we allow them to bid on it. So part of the prequalification process is, do you have enough insurance? Can you bond for the amount of the project so that if you go bankrupt halfway through it, I've actually got a bond that can cover that? So we look at these different things as we're moving forward with, with the approval process. Once we vet the prequalified contractors, then we allow only those contractors to bid on it. We've tried it different ways, where we try to prequalify the subcontractors before bidding, but that becomes problematic. We just don't have, quite frankly, months and months and months and months to vet these things. So we are limited to vetting only the prime contractors at this point. Now, how do we address your concerns? We are watched by the Center for Contract Compliance religiously. We are watched by the Center for Contract Compliance religiously. They want to know who the contractors, who all the subcontractors are. Are they registered with the Division of Industrial Relations? What's their DIR number? Have they been submitting certified payrolls? Have they paid the prevailing wage? We go out, we do interviews with the people. And part of the process is, Mr. Supervisor, you go stand over there and play Candy Crush on your, on your phone while I talk to your laborers over here. So there are checks and balances. We don't always catch everybody. And, you know, that's a sad shame, but there are people out there that play the game. But most of the people who go through this vetting process are on the up and up. So we, we do our best to do this. Under the public contract code, there is a statute under there that states that if you as a contractor fail to pay your workers prevailing wage, you get fined $25 to $50 per day, per person on the job. In addition, you now owe that person 125% of what you should have paid them. So having the Center for Contract Compliance, having the International Electrical Brotherhood, having the carpenters' union, having all the various trades looking at these things and requesting through the public records request, all of our documents, documents from the contractors even, and they have to provide them under the Public Records Act. This is how we manage and hopefully maintain that somebody's getting paid correctly. And if we find out they're not getting paid, then we just hold money back from the contractor and make sure that they do get paid.
Yeah, thank you for that very good summary of, I'm familiar with municipal projects, but I don't know if everybody was, so I appreciate your summary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Louise, did you have another point you were going to make?
My question was exactly what you were going to ask. So there you go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we, unless there's any, anything else, Louise, you want to perhaps put your thoughts or ideas into a motion that kind of captures what we talked about?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project and confirm issuance of the category exemption for sequoia and approve the development plan, D 21 0002, conditional use permit, CUP 21 0001, the variance, V 21 0002, by adopting the planning commission resolution number 2021 P 33. But we want to add that we wanted to just kind of add a few details of tile or something, and hopefully the tower and some tile in your entrance areas, just to kind of try to draw the two together. And so I, that sounds terrible, Jeff. I know it's not rightly stated, but just to add a few more architectural details to the building.
City planners, that enough of a motion to kind of capture what we kicked around this evening?
I think he, I think he's shaking his head like, yeah, I can, I think we're on the same planet.
Very, very good. Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
Clarify, staff will work with the architect to implement that direction. We're not coming back.
Yes, please. That's exactly what we're looking for. Okay, great. So we have a motion, Commissioner Obama, and then we have a second on that motion, Vice Chair Morrissey. Any further discussion? Don't see any, so let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Obama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
I 2 M E S, city planner?
For the record, we'll record that as four in favor, zero against. A motion passes, and we will work with the architect regarding those comments.
Thank you. One, one last question. What's the timing on this project breaking ground and, and construction?
I want to go now to bid.
And bid.
Commissioner, Brian will answer that question.
Thank you, Commissioner. The completion of the plans is expected by the end of the year with bidding in December. And we're looking to bring a contract to city council in January. Construction start mid to late February, and then I think it's an 18-month contract GV, so 18 months after that.
So end of '23-ish?
Roughly.
Yeah, very good. That's quick. Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thank you both. No, thank you all so much. And thank you, guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Moving to appeal of city planners' determination. I don't see anything on tonight's agenda. So we'll go to discussion items, any discussion items? Don't see anything agendized, city planners. So we'll go to reports? I really don't have anything this evening to report that I can think of, unless I remember afterwards. Vice Chair Morrissey, anything?
I have a question for our director. I heard today that when you have a ADA, you know, handicap parking on private property, that, and somebody's parking there, that's not a handicap, you know, car, and you call the police, that this happened, and somebody brought this up to me, that if it's on private property, the police can't write a citation. And that seemed odd to me. And I was wondering maybe if you could opine on that or if you could get back to us on that?
I, Chair and Commissioners, I'm not that familiar with the implementation of the ADA, but I have heard that the compliance is, is based on private actions essentially. So unless the city's involved somehow, either through entitlements or city property or public property, I'm not sure the city gets involved. But I can follow up and
Well, and this, this really happened where a guy comes up to a restaurant and they have a handicap vehicle, the gal's in a wheelchair, and there's the handicap stall, there's two stalls, one is coned off and the other one, there's a truck in it. And when the person that was driving asked the proprietor, hey, you know, these, these, this vehicle here is not a handicap vehicle, he said, you know, pound sand, more or less. And we, and so this guy said, okay, we'll see. And he called the police. And the police came and basically said on private property, they have, they, they can't issue a citation. And if that's the case, I think that kind of, there's some, seems something wrong with that. I mean, the whole idea is to help folks that need the help. So.
Let me talk to our parking enforcement staff along with OPD, and I can get back to the planning commission, because I don't want to, I'm speculating at this point. I know better than to do that.
Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Obama?
Well, I'm just going to make a kind of a comment. Actually, our gala was a success. This is when we do our commissioner reports, right? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay.
This is commissioner time.
Our gala was a great success. We raised a lot of money for the Surf Museum. But when we had some comments tonight about the union and prevailing wage and all that, when I was in charge of building, I built the Surf Museum, right? So I was the, the project manager. And at first, we were going to be able to build it without prevailing wage. So we got all of our bids done and everything was done, and we got our contractors lined up. And then the city came back and said, oh, no, we have a few dollars of money that we were using for that, because it's a city-owned building, that we have to go prevailing wage. So I had to rebid it all over again, but the bids were 30% more. So it's 30% more to build. And not that I'm saying, I'm not negative or positive here. I'm just saying that, you know, like, the guys that we hired to do this job was the same exact contractor, because we still liked the guy. So the same guy was able to do prevailing wage or non-pervailing wage. So it just makes the building costs 30% higher. And when the other gentleman said, it's too expensive to live in California, well, hey, that's one of the reasons. I mean, you got to be able to, you got to have two. You got to have union, non-union. They, they're all really qualified. This same contractor was the same.
Yeah, everything was identical.
It was the same, he was the same guy. We still got a great job done. So it's kind of like, you know, you can't say all the guys are bad. Like, they brought up a couple where they're, they're taking people under the table and paying cash. I mean, that's, that probably happens in everybody's lives.
Yeah. So there's one project that you have the example. There's other projects that, that were not done so well.
Yeah, there's others, but I
With some crappy contractors, yeah.
Well, that, when we, when we, I mean, if you go prevailing wage, it is just 30% more.
30%, just boom, that's what it is.
Boom.
So 18, 18 million less 30%, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. Commissioner Custer?
No, I have nothing to report.
Okay. City planner?
Briefly, the November 22nd meeting, we intend to cancel. It's the same week as
Which one? Oh, the one before Thanksgiving?
Correct.
Okay.
So we've been trying to keep things off that agenda, and it looks like we'll cancel that one. The next meeting would be December 13th. We're going to bring an update to the ADU ordinance. There's a fourplex at 1611 South Tremont, and then there's some condominiums at 833 South Pacific Street. And finally, there's a preferential permit parking on El Monte Drive. The traffic staff will be bringing that to you. A little bit of background on that. At one time, there was a separate transportation commission or committee, and then during the Great Recession, the city combined that and, or folded it into the planning commission. So now you folks deal with those kind of traffic issues. And that's all I had.
The St. Malo variance, I think, is, that's been lingering out there for a long time. Any, any word on where they are? I think they were trying to set up where we'd go and take a look at it, but.
The last communication we had with their representative was she was going to reduce the size of the deck in hopes to get a compromise and having the neighbors who opposed it to soften their opposition or remove their opposition. And that's the last I heard. They asked to continue it indefinitely or to postpone it not to a date certain. So when we hear from them, we'll let you know.
Okay.
We believe that even if they reduce the deck and there's any kind of construction, given it's in the appealable area, it may have to come with a coastal development permit anyways. So we'll see.
So if, if I've got it right, at this rate, we have one meeting left for this year, December 13th?
That is correct.
When?
December 13th. That's our next meet.
December.
Next 13th.
And when, Jeff, when you, when's your last meeting?
December 17th is my last day with the city.
Oh, good.
Do you want to go out and party after that?
We'll have to take that off.
Maybe just a little beverage afterwards.
Yeah, we want to do something for
Yeah, take you out for cocktail. I don't know.
Yeah.
Would you want to with us?
Yeah.
Oh, yay. Okay, good. So let's plan on.
For home?
Yeah.
We're not going to close it down, but.
Okay, good.
Very good. We'll look forward to it.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. We stand adjourned.
I'll just say, I mean, there's no chance of the 22nd meeting coming back on for November, right?
Not at time.
Virginia.
Yeah, you go, girl.
That's right. We can't lose any of you guys now.
I know.
I know. Down to a bare minimum.
We're a little thin up here. We are adjourned.